Stand for a pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Needles, can you take roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Baaco.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Commissioner Godioso.
Here.
Commissioner Rikowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Lisa Catania. Mike Pierce.
Here.
And myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners meeting for tonight, October 25th, 2021, scheduled at 7:30 PM. At the moment, I'd like just to make record that there are no citizens in the audience. So for right now, I'm going to bypass citizens' comments and we'll move on to our regular agenda. Item number five on our agenda, can I have approval of the minutes from the September 9th, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number six, have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow release number eight for Profco Pavilion Boothwin LLC in the amount of $39,456.04. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. If there are no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number seven, have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow release number one for burger rentals in the amount of $56,149.69. So moved.
Second.
This motion in a second. If there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number eight, have a member of the board consider a motion accepting the plan submitted by Falco Engineering for grading application number 200013, pending confirmation of acceptance from the members of the Somerset Homeowners Association. Move.
Second.
Do we have a copy?
Question. Big one from last week?
Okay.
Did they, wasn't there an issue? You guys were trying to everything ironed out with them, with the homeowners? No, I know. I thought there was a little hiccup last week. Though we're moving forward, it's a good thing then.
Yes, correct. Well, we're just waiting for confirmation from acceptance from, from the homeowners. Thank you. Good news. Alright, so there's a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number nine on the agenda, have a member of the board consider a resolution approving the proposed transfer of Pennsylvania Restaurant Liquor License Number R-46212 from Pomponi's Pizza, L.A.C., formerly located at 1145 West Baltimore Pike, Number 3046, Media PA, zip code 19063-5156, to Wawa Inc., to a restaurant facility to be located at 2608 Chichester Avenue, Boothwin, PA, 19061, with the understanding that the said transfer must be approved at a later date by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any comments? No comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number 10, have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing an escrow release for Christine Thompson in the amount of $1,444.00. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. If there are no com-
Yeah. What is it for?
Um, it's an escrow release. Mr. Needles, if you can-
Oh, escrow release. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number 11, have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing an escrow release for Let's Go Homes LLC in the amount of $5,495.35. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number 13, have a member of the board consider a motion denying the vacant property registration fee request of Pemco Limited for 1828 Peach Street. So moved.
Second. Question. Did we, I mean? Yeah, I thought that was-
Mm-hmm.
What is, I mean, is there a reason why we're denying?
So typically, typically, we, the board has waived the fee when it's a owner, like it's owned by a resident. This is owned by a, it's owned by a mortgage company. And their, their request was that they didn't have enough time to get it on the market yet, so they still have some repairs to do. So it is vacant. They're still obligated to, to, to register it as a vacant property. There is an option for the board to waive it. In the past, the board hasn't waived it for the, the banks. They typically waive it for when it's like owner, like an owner.
It's just been vacant for a while, or is this just a recent transfer where somebody-
No, it's been vacant for a while.
Alright, if there's no other comments, there's a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. We'll jump back to number 12. My apologies for overs, overlooking it. Have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow release for Let's Go Homes, LLC in the amount of $34.58.
Second.
So motion in a second. If there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number 14 on the agenda, have a member of the board consider a motion authorizing the township solicitor, engineer, and manager to take necessary actions related to 824 Meeting House Roads claim on the previously vacated section of Rankin Avenue.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? If there are no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. For agenda items number 15 through 18, we'll have our vice chairman, Commissioner Joe Baaco, read.
Consider a motion approving an amendment to the contract with the Teamsters Union allowing members in the Public Works Department to sell back to the township up to one week of 2021 vacation before the end of 2021, subject to the acceptance of the bargaining unit.
Motion in a second. Are there any comments? No comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion to allow the township to dispose those as of various cleaning equipment, cooking equipment, office equipment, and public works equipment no longer used through the sale on www.municipid.com.
Second.
Question. George, is the old generator going to be done to get rid of at the same time, or no? They will put it on the big, or the municipal, eventually. Okay.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting change order number one from Premier Concrete Incorporated in the amount of $7,329.94 for the Chichester Avenue Streetscape Project.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? No, no. If there are no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion reauthorizing payment request number three from Premier Concrete Incorporated for the Chichester Avenue Streetscape Project in the amount of $30,000, $30,058.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any comments?
Yeah, real quick comment. So this is a reauthorization. Last month, they authorized it at 70,000, but they were able to allocate some of that to this community development block grant portion of the project, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baaco. For items number 19 through 21, we'll have Commissioner, oh, oh, whoa, whoa, my apologies, jumping ahead of the game. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, items number 19 through 21, Commissioner Whitaker.
Right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Consider a motion authorizing the township manager to write a letter of support for the Chichester Rotary Pico Green Region Grant Application for the Pollinate, for the Pollinator Meadow Project at I-95 and Chichester Avenue.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments? If no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
I'm going to skip over and I'll go back to the last one. Consider a motion authorizing the town, I'm sorry? That was the same thing. Got it, okay. Alright, so the 2021 Tent and Treat Event will take place here at Fury Road Fieldhouse this Friday, October the 29th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Um, bring your children out. Board of Commissioners, we also will have a table and we'll be giving out candy as well. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's just an announcement.
Yes.
We won't take any action on that. As Mr. Needles indicated, item number 21 is a duplicate of item, of number 19. So with that said, we'll move on to items 22 through 26, and Commissioner Joe Neary will brief for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Consider a motion accepting the resignation of Vincent McCoofedell on the position of part-time patrol officer in the Upper Chichester Township Police Department.
Second.
This motion in a second. Are there any comments? No comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion activating the Civil Service Commission for the administration for a sergeant qualification test. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any comments? If there are no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion entering into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Chichester School District for enforcement of 75 PAC.S.S.A., Section 3345, captured using an automated stop signal enforcement system, the bus patrol system, for the issuance of a civil penalty, subject to the review of the township solicitor. So moved.
Second.
This motion in a second. Are there any comments? Just, I just, one comment. I, you know, I'm, I'm in full support of it. Um, my only question, is there going to be two separate agreements, one between the school district and the vendor providing the equipment, and then the school district and the local municipalities are going to be participating?
We assume that that's how it's going to go. I've only seen some of the things. I did make some comments.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the township solicitor to take necessary steps to communicate to the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office that Upper Chichester Township would like to enter into the $26 billion settlement with the three major drug distributors, Amara Source Bergen, Cardinal Health, and McKesson, along with Johnson &amp; Johnson, for their role in creating the opioid prices. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Uh, are there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Finally, consider a motion approving the list of bills in the million, in the amount of $1,608,365.26.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion in a second.
I should have let you do it. A million dollars, I'm really lonely.
Any comments? Alright, if there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Alright, this time we'll move on to our commissioners' report, and professionals. We'll start with our professionals' report. Here's our solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a copy of my, excuse me, written report in the file. All of the action items that were necessary for this month were taken care of in the commissioners' portion of the meeting. There are several follow-up items specifically related to property maintenance that we continue to work with, Mr. Crowley. Uh, there are several enforcement aspects that have to be dealt with as well. Uh, in addition, uh, the Creekside for Commissioner Neary, I do have the confirmation that Mr. Pasta was served. I think we're in the process now of doing the cost estimates and then going back and taking care of that. Well, everything else is in order, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for our solicitor? Not when we want to our engineers' report. Ms. Lisa Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. You do have a copy of my report. Uh, just a few things. Wawa is moving forward. Uh, we're hearing that it should be sometime in December that they're expecting to open. Hopefully that will happen. Uh, with the action that you've taken this evening, I did take the liberty of giving the new floor plan to the BCO to verify what would need to be done. They will need to put new building permit applications in for that change. Uh, so hopefully they'll have that to the township for review as quickly as possible. Auto Zones moving forward, as you can see, they're currently doing the sidewalk along Chichester Avenue, and they are now starting to ask about temporary construction, or temporary occupancy for the building. So that project's moving along pretty well as well. Uh, Willbrook Clubhouse, I had a meeting with the new director of construction. Uh, they are looking at, at doing something, uh, to control the slope issue that we have next to the building. So that is not part of the contract, but they are going to be doing that, and they're also working with Chester Water Authority and their own sources, trying to locate the water main to see if a new hydrant can be placed again at the request of the fire marshal. Um, that's, that's in a separate project. However, they are proposing to do so. Um, as you can see, Duncan, we are not in a position at this point uh, to do anything with the Dunkin' Donuts on the Conchester as of yet. The Maple Zone Hotel, we've done a, another review. We're working on that. Jake's, I have the drawings for recording. They've been executed by, by me, and will need to get executed by the township in order to record those. 820 Columbia, we are hopefully going to see record plans from the subdivision shortly. And, uh, the land development, we are waiting on, uh, some additional information. They are going to be asking for an extension. Uh, the Alliance Project, I have the 4800 Alliance here. Uh, we've just received those plans. And otherwise, uh, we've talked about the, the Chichester Avenue. You're going to be seeing some traffic calming on Johnson Avenue as part of that change order. Uh, hopefully within the next month, we'll see the new s- street name signs and, uh, the other signage go up on the street. Uh, we're, we're moving forward with that. Otherwise, um, unless anyone has any questions, I'll just report general progress.
Any questions for our engineer?
I have a couple. Uh, on the signage, where do we stand with the Welcome Nelpe Chi? Or, I mean, I know we've been picking out colors. Am I correct, or we got the color scheme all ready to go, or, or do we have a grant for that or something?
We had a grant for Twin Oaks and Excelsior Village. I spoke with the contractor. I think we're, we're square. We've had some changes with lettering. Um, there is going to be a portion that the township is going to be responsible for, but we're moving forward with that. So we should see that hopefully by the end of the year completed.
Anything in Nicole's area coming off I-95 with the new streetscape and everything?
Just Twin Oaks and Excelsior Villages are the two welcome signs that we have. As far as other welcome signage, I know Brian was working on some, some items, but I'm not aware of any specifics at this point. Um, specific locations.
Not a Wawa, the wall. Are we getting the kinks out of that? Any, any electric going there yet, so we can see it?
They are moving forward. Um, I don't know if anyone's noticed, but they took all the letters off. They put them back on. They are straighter, however, they, no one's happy with them at this point. Uh, us or, or PHC, they're going to be working on it again. They've also bought dye because the one section of wall to the left is a different coloration than on the right, so they're going to be dyeing the stone to, to take care of, of that issue. So we're moving forward. That's all I can tell you.
Time to change your stone anyway by itself. I mean, the stone changed within five years anyway, with the weather and everything, two different colors. Never are. I mean, my stone in front of my house changed within five years. It was all the same, but now it's all, if it's natural stone.
It's not natural stone.
Oh, there you go.
It's the, this concrete, lick and sticks, as you call them. Lick them and stick them.
Lick them, stick them. It's kind of, yeah. And one more question, uh, don't want to hold us up here. The old Walgreens, do you have any archives on that, uh, Dollar General? There used to be a sign coming out on the Namens Creek Road. There was on the stop sign that said, "No right turn."
Happy Harries.
Whoops. But that, it's gone. So now we have people just making a left on the Namens Creek Road, going right over the railroad tracks. I mean, the arrow is still in the driveway. You can't miss it, but the sign suddenly disappeared. And I don't know if we made that a vengeance when they built the place, or Happy Harries went in, or Wal, then Walgreens, that they had to, no turn, no left-hand turn, just right. I'd like to see if, if we have it on record, I'd like to see the sign back up.
I'll, I'll take a look. I have the original Happy Harries, and it was probably, if anything, it was not only, uh, an Upper Chi, may have also been a pen dot requirement to get the permit for that.
Okay.
Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look.
Thank you.
Any of the commissioners have questions for our township engineer?
I just wanted to comment that I did speak with Lisa regarding the Thomas Avenue, and George, um, is he going to, are we going to communicate with him with, with a letter? Form a letter, because I can call you tomorrow. We can kind of go over that. Want to send him a letter? Correct. Right. Right. Okay, yeah, so it was, the discussion was either he do it when he starts construction, or he does it again before. So it's going to cost him either way. So at this point, it's not waive, we're not waiving it all together. He still has to do it. It's just a matter of when he wants to do it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's other questions, we'll move on to our township manager's report. Mr. George Needles.
Yeah, good evening. All the administrative reports are on file. Um, we've, the resolutions passed tonight. We're number 49 through 54. And, uh, just that we have a meeting next Thursday as well, so a quick turnaround between this meeting and our meeting. Thank you.
Any members of the board have questions for, um, our township manager?
Sorry, 824 Meeting House. When I go to the next door neighbor, if there's an issue, I might have to give you that address to, for next meeting to start the process for, since we're going to try to clean it up. I'm not quite sure if the one prior to 824 in there that was part of it, I just want to make sure if we're doing it, just get it done in a, that's all. I'll let you know.
Alright, um, we'll move on from our professionals' report and on to our commissioners, and we'll start off with our vice chairman, Mr. Commissioner Joe Baaco.
Thank you. Um, I'll report your own file. Um, just want to touch base on a few things. Uh, this generator job, it has been started. Our guys poured the pad and stuff, so that's on the way. Yeah, that's all that I have. I've been getting, uh, as far as the sewer authority, we used to get a monthly report, but they've just been sending me a copy of the minutes each month. I would rather have the monthly report. I would rest it. Shows what happened, what's been going on. Alright, I'm going to go back to that. I have nothing else. I mean, highway guys are moving progress to finish in some of their, storm drains and inlets that they're repairing. I know that it's Mark and Joe's board. Nobody has any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for Commissioner Baaco? Alright, uh, we'll move on to Commissioner Nicole Whitaker's report.
Alright, good evening again. Thank you. Um, the only thing that I have is I just want to, um, give kudos again to everyone that worked to, um, pull off our first fall, um, Community Day, which was on, um, Saturday, October the 9th. Uh, I heard it was well-attended, and, um, everyone had a really good time, was showing. So hopefully we can keep in that same manager, manner, maybe tweak the time, um, better with the school district if we're going to, uh, follow the football game. Um, and um, I'll repeat again, the, um, table of treats this Friday here at Fury Road from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. All I have, thank you.
Any questions for Commissioner Whitaker? Not when we, we want to. Commissioner Ed Rikowski.
Thank you. Um, the reports are on file. Um, I'm looking at, I want to thank the Finance Committee, and we had a budget meeting earlier tonight, and the support for the medic unit, uh, in the budget. Also, uh, emergency manager, and I think, George, everybody got that email from Bill for the tabletop?
Yes, I sent out the, uh-
I sent out a, uh, uh, email, like a meeting request as well, for people to put it on their calendars. So it's, uh, that's going to be in December.
Yeah, we'll have to get the date back. We have enough time, but it's, it's very lengthy. It's like 5:00, uh, in the afternoon till 9:00 or something like that, so.
We're going to be here all night, so.
Right.
Be ready.
Um, and the last one is the Boothwin Town Center. Um, we did meet last Thursday night to task force. Uh, they're, they're getting very excited to do the presentation by February, or hope to the Board of Commissioners. Um, but the open house will be at the Community Action Building on Meeting House Road, and that will be November 8th from 5:00 to 7:30. Um, what our planner gave to us last Thursday was pretty exciting on so many ideas, and as George said, I think the committee itself will have that idea that you stated at the finance, that you pick at the plans and the projects in little pieces, and there's a couple little pieces in the Boothwin Towns, Town Center that may be able to be accomplished, and not something that they want a million dollars done in a year, which I mentioned that back almost a year ago. It's been almost, and I've gave them my ideas, and this task force has been nothing but on board with everything, and they understand it, and I think it's going to be a pretty good plan, and something that we have for that whole area. It's not just right at the Wawa. It goes down to Meeting House Road to the middle school, I-95, right up to Kings, Kingsley Road at the bridge, back over. So another one of those nights that they share their, their vision, and hopefully we'll have a plan for February for the Board of Commissioners.
Any questions for Commissioner Rikowski?
And everyone's invited for November 8th, 5:00.
Questions? Not when we want to. Commissioner, um, Joe Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Um, the financial reports for the financial statements showing the status of the township funds are available in the office, as well as the tax collector's, uh, monthly report, which I'm glad to see again. Uh, the Upper Chichester Township Police Department report is also available in the office for anybody's, uh, inspection and details. Um, that's all I have.
Any questions for Commissioner Neary? If not, we'll wrap up with my report. As, uh, Lisa Catania mentioned, we did receive plans for the, um, proposed, um, Warehouse Center, number 322, which is affectionately known as the Go to Farm in Upper Chichester Township. So when the commissioners have a chance, please review and, um, provide any, any, any comments that you might have. Uh, zoning, were there any new zoning applic-, uh, zoning applications submitted for next month? It's for December. Is that Jay, is that Mr. Jay Wills? So just let the board know that there's a pending application that's going to be coming in December. Um, Mr. Wills is proposing, um, to construct a structure along Chichester Avenue. He's going in front of the zoning board for a, a variance, a, a mixed-use variance. So I know there's mixed-use variances throughout the township. Um, he's proposing to have his business on the lower level and living quarters for him and his wife on the upper level. So I just want the board to be aware of that. Um, again, there's many, um- Okay. Alright, thank you. But just to reiterate again, there's, there's different, there's various uses of similar conditions with that type of setup in the, in the township. I really don't have anything else to, uh, report on. Um, does anybody have any questions for me? No? Alright, um, I have a-
I-
Yes?
I forgot to mention one thing.
Go ahead.
For those who did not, who may be watching, who attended, did not attend the budget meeting, preliminary budget was reviewed tonight, and will be probably adopted next Thursday night, and thanks to the committee of Mr. Needles, Mr. Snagley, and Mr. Finelli, there's a budget that is gonna be presented with no tax increase and no trash fee increase for the tenth, twelfth year.
Well, eleven for us to-
For a long time, thanks.
Yes. Yes, George and everybody else, thank you for working on that and helping us achieve that goal again. All right, so, have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
So motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any oppose, the eyes have it.
No.
Thank you, everybody, for attending, and we'll see you next week. In your, in your Boothwind Heights, in your Boothwind Heights thing-